Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Superior Town Council and the Superior Metropolitan District Number One Board of Directors, meeting for Monday, December eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Surbu.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish. Councilmember Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Craycraft.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Martin Toth.
Here.
Town Attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is item two C, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes that anybody would like to make? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, we got a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Surbu.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Craycraft. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, and we're on to our council reports. Who'd like to go first tonight? Neil?
I'll go. No specific updates, other than I want to extend my condolences to Senator, Senator, State Senator Faith Winter and her daughters. Obviously, everyone is probably quite familiar with what happened and her role in the state legislature, but what probably isn't well-known is that last year she worked very closely with COYAC, the Colorado Youth Advisory Council. Each Senate district has one appointee to COYAC, and the Senate District Eighteen rep was here from Superior. Senator Winter worked very closely with all of COYAC last year on their bills as they navigated them through the legislative process. Her impact on this group of kids was huge, and her absences could be felt by many. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Neil. Ready?
Just a few things. First, just wanted to thank the community and the Sister City Committee for this year's Holiday Bazaar. It was the most well-attended, so very, very exciting. We raised over three thousand dollars for the Sister City project, which the project is to try to make a more sanitary market for them in Kanabari. So, thank you to all those who came and supported. It was a really, really great event. At Chat with the Chief, just a couple reminders first, that there won't be a chat in December because of the holidays, but just a couple tidbits that I thought I'd pass along as we're reaching into the holiday season and people are traveling. If you notify the police department, they can do extra patrols around your house while you're out of town, so something that everybody should take advantage of, just to make sure that your home is safe while you're away. If you are parking your car outside of your garage, again, he always encourages you not to do that, but if you do, make sure you take your garage door opener out so people don't have easy access to your house. And he also pointed out, and I didn't know this was a thing, but on Amazon or other retailers, you can get keychains that are garage door openers, or you could, obviously, for ones that are Wi-Fi enabled, use a remote on your phone, and that way you don't have a garage door opener at all. So, encourage everyone to do that, so you're not leaving basically a key to your home for criminals to take. And then, he mentioned, streetlights all have individual numbers, something I guess I just never realized, but if you see a streetlight is out, that's not a town thing, that's an Excel thing, but you can report the actual post number to Excel so they know which one to fix. So, just a few reminders. And then, a couple upcoming events I don't want people to forget about. This Saturday is Winter Fest from one to five in downtown Superior, so I would encourage everybody to come to that. It's just a great way to get together and celebrate the season. And thank you to the chamber and town staff for all your work in making that happen, because I know it's a lot of work. So, thank you for everything you do. And then, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a safe new year. That's it for me.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Heather?
Thank you. Just one quick note from Historical Commission, which I have the pleasure of joining that meeting each month. Just wanted to let everyone know that the Miners Park Bronze Artist has been chosen, and very excited to hear his thoughts on kind of moving forward. So, the committee's been working very hard, and I think everyone will be very excited when it does come to fruition. So, just wanted to give that report.
Thanks.
For those of you that are looking for a date night, February fourteenth, Silk, which is our Superior Youth Advisory Council, is going to be hosting a Parents Night Out that evening from six thirty to nine P.M. So, if you're looking to take your spouse out on a date and drop the kids off, it's going to be at Elverado School. It's going to be a great event. We had a lot of kids last year, great movies and fun activities to keep the kids busy while parents are out, maybe taking a nap, I don't know. Getting a reprieve. And Silk is also working with Councilmember Cowish to, for the Sockitoum Event, which is collecting socks and toiletries and feminine hygiene products, wound care for people that are in need. So, if you are interested in donating any of those items, you can reach out to Councilmember Cowish or myself, and we can get you in contact with the Silk Committee, and they will be more than happy to accept your donation and get that to the folks that need it. With that, well done. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Jason?
Good evening. Let's see, quite a bit to catch up on since we haven't been here in about a month, so I'll make it really quick. November thirteenth, there's a new sheriff in town, we'll call it. There's a group called Superior Acts, and it was created by Audrey Hendricks and Margie Resch, and it's a community-based group to bring more awareness and attention to local issues that affect the town of Superior as well as the greater area. They hosted State Rep Kyle Brown at the Civic Space. Topics included healthcare, the state of mental health care in Colorado, sustainable actions and climate change, and especially how the new AI infrastructure and energy needs make an impact on the environment. I got to be Kyle's warm-up back, because Kyle was running late. Just another reminder why I can't do comedy, but I was able to answer a few questions, and Councilmember Foster was there as well, so he was attended by two people from the council. November fifteenth, the Face Band played at the Civic Space. It was a sold-out event. Thank you to the Chamber and to the Events Committee. It was a fantastic show. November seventeenth, Mile High Flood District. I was nominated for the Executive Committee and chosen by the Committee for the two thousand twenty-six year. And I know floodplains don't sound really sexy, but for an architect or an engineer, they actually do create such an amazing balance with the environment, especially when you start intruding on the natural landscape. So, it's something I'm really looking forward to being a part of. November twentieth, at Bambi's, it was a Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to the businesses. That was very, very well-attended, as usual. Turkey Trot. On Thanksgiving, I was asked by the leaders of the Advent, held Vista Lewis Turkey Trot, to come and kind of help emcee, but mine was a very minor role, because thankfully, we had Joanie Goose in, who participated, as well as Erin Molston of one hundred and twenty-seven Hours fame, and I can tell you in person, he was much better-looking than James Franco, so they should have just let him do his own act. But it was a fantastic event. They raised over ninety-two thousand dollars to benefit the community food share, and that's the equivalent of one hundred and forty thousand meals. A record number of people came by. There were over ten thousand people. It took fifteen minutes for the runners to get past the starting line just to start the event. And along the way, there were cups of coffee, hot chocolate, beer, wine, and pizza, and I'm really looking forward to continuing my involvement next year. First Friday Coffee was on this past Friday. We talked about a number of things. I think Mark's probably a better idea and grasp on that than I do. And then, poker. If you're a senior and you like playing poker, we have poker also on Friday, the twelfth and the nineteenth. They begin at two thirty at the Community Center. These will be our last two events of the year, and then they'll stop, and then we'll continue again on January ninth. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple things to report on. Just wanted to congratulate the Sister City Kanabari, Sister City Group for hosting the Superior Bazaar this past weekend at the Superior Community Center. It was the best-attended Superior Bazaar to date, and benefits a great cause. We also had the Dance et Twas Ballet at the Superior Civic Space this winter, this past Saturday, and it's just, you know, two amazing organizations using our community spaces, gathering in a central location, and it's just a great use of the space that we have here. So, continue to use our community spaces and continue to gather as a community and support these great local organizations. As Councilmember Miller indicated, Winter Fest is this Saturday from one to five P.M. downtown, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, the Town of Superior, and Blue Sports Stable. Come on down. We'll have Reindeer, Santa, Skate with Santa, all the things, and it looks like it's going to be a beautiful day. So, we look forward to seeing you there. And then, I also just want to extend my condolences to the family of Faith Winter and also to her fiance, our former state rep, Matt Gray, who used to represent us here in House District Thirty-three. Losing Faith Winter was an enormous tragedy for this entire community. She did so much for the state of Colorado, and we were impacted here from her years and years and years of service. So, it's a tremendous loss, and my deepest condolences to her family. And that's everything that I've got tonight. Assistant Town Manager Toth.
Nothing, thank you.
Town Attorney.
Nothing here.
And our Town Clerk.
Nothing.
All right, thank you. All right, we're on to our... What are we on? We're on public comment on our consented agenda presentations and non-agenda items. If you'd like to give public comment here, and you're here in the boardroom, we've got a sign-in sheet at the desk there. Give us your first and last name and the town in which you reside, and we'll take your public comment in the order in which we've got you signed up. Limit five minutes per person. If you're participating via Zoom and you'd like to give public comment, you can use the raise hand feature, and I'll call on you in the order in which I see your hand raised.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
I am Renee Alanese, and I'm a Superior resident, but today I'm coming to you as the Executive Director for the Superior Chamber. You guys are, you've done a great job of promoting. This is, I just want to remind everyone, this is kind of the season of shopping local and shopping small, and we, the Chamber and the town have kicked off a whole shop local holiday program, and we have a holiday guide. So, for anyone shopping, there's a guide conveniently on the Superior Chamber website where you can find anything about deals, different programs, different specials for Superior residents by Superior businesses. So, I encourage you to look at that. And as an incentive, we have something called a passport program. This is new. This is a trial run this year, and it is an incentive program to visit all of our businesses. You collect a passport. You can get the passport here at Town Hall, at the Community Center, or at the business. If you visit them, they'll stamp your passport. If you buy something, you get a bonus stamp. Once you've filled them out, you can turn them back into the town or the community, the Community Center or Town Hall, and you have a chance to win prizes to these businesses. So, I encourage everyone to take advantage of that. This goes through to December twenty-fourth, so there's still plenty of time to visit these businesses. And as part of this, as already been mentioned, it is Winter Fest on December thirteenth. Starts with a stocking run, a run in the morning, and then it goes into a full day of activities, performances, Skate with Santa, a Grinch experience, listening to the third grader sing, which is the highlight. And we end the whole event with a tree lighting ceremony, our only tree lighting ceremony in Superior. So, I do encourage everyone, this event is also a fundraiser for community food share, and we have a special campaign for it. I don't know if we can beat the Turkey Trot, but that's my goal. So, I encourage you to go through Superior Chamber site. You'll see there's a Winter Fest Community Food Share. You can bring canned goods and foods to the event or make monetary donations. So, I encourage you to do that. And speaking of Winter Fest, I just want to recognize a partner whose impact has felt nearly at every corner of our community and its Vargas Property Services. And so, if you've ever attended a Chamber event or a festival, chances are the Vargas team was there long before you arrived, long after you left, and they are a quiet force that helps the Chamber and helps our community. We could not do Winter Fest without Vargas. And so, I want to just take a quick moment to recognize their contributions. They lift heavy things literally and frequently, and if we have a crazy idea, they actually figure out how to make it happen. We're a small Chamber team, and we do big events, and the only reason we can do these things is because we have Vargas and their professionalism and their dedication, not just for the Chamber, but for the town and for the community. And what sets them apart is not just their physical support, but their spirit of service. They come in and they support everyone. They support our businesses if they needed help. They support our volunteers and our residents, and they always show up with a smile, and they, they are, they never tell me no, which is really dangerous, but I love it. They're so generous with me. And so, if you've been to Winter Fest or Chili Fest or our Women in Business Superior Hair or Business Awards or even our Shop Superior Program, it would not look the same without Vargas's support. So, I just would like to note, like, everyone to understand that they bring stability and consistency and trust to all of our events. So, just on behalf of the Chamber, I just want to extend a heartfelt thanks to Vargas. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
I'm George Cuffnor, Superior resident. I've got a couple of things on my mind. I'll start with the bridge that we spent who knows how many millions of dollars on now at Rock Creek Parkway in McAsland. We just had them dig it all up this summer, all the way down to the edges and the sides, and they put a big I-beam in there. They didn't fix none of the cracks in the walls coming down the sides when they had it exposed. You can see big cracks and gaps in it still to this day, and it leaks like a sieve. So, do we not have an inspector that's eight years running Inspector of the Year? Or is he not working here no more? Because he missed that one. And who's going to pay to fix that? Are we going to make the contractor come back and do it right? Or are we just going to go down the road a little bit, kick the can, and next time we'll spend a few more million? I think it starts with our top leadership, not knowing what they're doing. With you, Mr. Mayor, to start with, all the way down. It's not a funny situation. You guys are going to have to raise our taxes to pay all these bills. So, that's just a little one. Now, my main one is, I was over in downtown Superior, and I seen two VAC trucks down in downtown Superior. I'm thinking, damn, that's funny. We got two VAC trucks in here. We own our own VAC truck. So, I went over, and of course, wore my shirt. I always do. And I asked the driver, I said, hey, what's going on here? And he says, well, we're out here sucking the storm sewer because the building over here with your civic center in it and all the people above are drunk and raw sewage in West Coal Creek. So, then I did a little more looking, and I walked around, and I see three signs down there by the bridge that says it's contaminated water. That's worse than contaminated water. It's been happening for more than a year. So, then I was in town again, and I see a fire hydrant meter hooked up to a fighter, fire hydrant, and they're washing the storm sewers. They're washing the shit further down past Lafayette, I would imagine. Come on, guys. We found out it was leaking sewage. We should have red-tagged that building, moved everybody out, and fixed that sewer. We do have neighbors. We wouldn't like it if somebody was shitting above us and sending it to us. So, if, does that not start with the top, Mr. Mayor, you, and then our Town Manager, and then our great inspector? I mean, what are we paying you guys for? What do we have you around for? To spend money? There's, everybody in this town knows how to spend money, and I doubt they waste it like you guys do. You guys act like it's an endless pit of money. That's like the Vargas contract. Yeah, they're good, but are they one point seven-plus million dollars good for a year? Come on, guys. It's out of hand. A million seven to cut grass, trim trees, push a little snow? Come on, we're, what do you guys think that everybody that lives in Superior has a printing press at home making money? And you guys at the top, especially Mr. Mayor, that can blackball people that are good contractors, because he don't like them, will pay all the rest of these people two and three times. So, I'd ask you for a comment, but I've been coming for so long, and I get very few, I've got one answer all the time I've been coming. So, I don't expect an answer. I really don't. But you guys better wake up, because going to tax us out of existence here. And I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not making three hundred bucks an hour like you are. So, let's, let's pull our head up, and let's straighten this town out for the rest of us poor people. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Hey, how's it going? I'm James. I'm a Superior resident. This is my first time doing one of these, so bear with me on this.
Welcome.
Oh, thanks. Appreciate it. So, I'm here to talk about Flock cameras. How many people know about them? Just raise a hands. It's a good bit here. The rest of you that don't, it's really scary technology. Essentially, there's these cameras all over the state. There's about, I believe, over a thousand over the front range, at least twenty-five in Superior alone. They can, they're always reading your license plates when you go by and putting it into a database. These have been used for lots of different reasons, and with these, you don't need a warrant for it. It's required, or it's partially required, but they have some certain language in the Flock contract that can get around that. So, I was curious with the Superior ones. I've noticed that there is some around town. I'm not sure how long they've been here. I just noticed some a couple weeks ago, and then this was the first Town Hall after. I was curious, is our contract through the Town of Superior or is it a Boulder County one that brought Flock to us?
We typically don't do a Q and A, so this is just open public comment, but...
I'll leave those parts out. But essentially, one of the things that they have in the standard Flock contracts that unless you change it, says it grants a worldwide perpetual realty-free rate and license to disclose the agency data. So, if you guys didn't put in a special contract here, they can sell our data without asking you about it. And as a concerned citizen, I don't want my data being given to anyone that asks for it from whatever state that asked for it, because this can be given to any state and just any sort of administration with this. So, I'd like to request that you guys look into the contract with this, and honestly, I'd request that the Flock cameras got taken down.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. My name is Sean Dunham. I'm a Superior resident. I wanted to express my disappointment that we, as a town, decided not to do holiday lights this year, and I wanted to thank the Rock Creek Gates away for taking up that responsibility and taking that on. And I think some things are taken for granted. As a resident, you start thinking about the things that the town does and is known for, like our Fourth of July or our Chili Fest. And I think our holiday lights are something that we also are known for. So, I just want to express my disappointment that we could not find the funding for that, and I would like us to try and do that for next year and in the future years. And, you know, because Rock Creek Gates away took it on this year, I'd like to propose that we do that next year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Morris. I live at three-three-five Cherokee. My wife and I invested in the neighboring lot, three-three-nine Cherokee, with the intent to improve on that lot, to give ourselves a side yard, to increase the value of our current home, potentially to sell that lot in the future, but also to give ourselves a fire break between us and the next house. and the next house, which could very well have been 10 feet from us. Before I give you the details of an issue I'm going through, I first want to acknowledge the work that you do here. I sang your praises quite a bit after the fire. I do think you have our best interest in mind, and through podcasts and interviews, I said that a lot. I also want to acknowledge that your job is hard, and you sometimes have to make decisions with limited information. And I want to give you a little more information about the issue that I have right now. So we, all we want to do on this neighboring lot is to build a gazebo and a shed, some shade, and to put some bicycles in a shed. And I'm being told that we need to merge those lots to do so. Okay. I want to step back a little bit and talk about the history of the plan development document in Sagamore. So after the fire, most of you know that we would have had to build the KB Homes, the elevations that were in the original PD document. Nobody wanted to do that. There was consensus that we should have flexibility, and you agreed with that, too. So we had to amend the PD. I was the original author of that. I drafted the First Amendment. And then I went to Stephen Williams, because he was the former planning director, and said, I'm having a hard time reaching consensus because I can't reach 171 people. Everyone's dispersed. Could you please hire Clarion to do that? And he said he would, and I'm thankful for that. Clarion did a nice job. They did a bunch of surveys. They got consensus from the neighborhood. It was then presented in this room in April of 2022. This is what we, the neighborhood want to do for the amendment. And it looked identical to this document four weeks after the fire, with one exception. Stephen Williams said, I just realized that if we allow people to buy two lots that are scraped, they could merge them and they could build a large home. And we don't know whether that's a good thing or not, but we do know we haven't contemplated that before. And so I propose that we put a hold on the ability to merge lots. So if you want to merge lots, and I think this is verbatim what he said, we're not saying you can't. We just want to hear about it first. Okay? The concern was a big home. Not just that it, it could be a big home, but the concern was we haven't contemplated that yet. So I would like to merge lots. I shortly after that asked Stephen Williams, can I merge lots? And here's an email from Stephen Williams that says, yes, you can merge lots. Then the Sagamore regulations came out that said, yes, you can merge lots. Okay? We just need to hear about it first. All right. So I've been trying to do that for a little while. I would like to merge lots, and I'm having some trouble. As of last week, last Monday, the guidance that I thought I heard from your, your special meeting was that I may have to go back to the neighborhood and potentially get 171 signatures, or maybe a majority, to say, Matt Morris, you're allowed to consider merging your lots. Now, that wasn't the intent back at that special meeting in April of 2022. That wasn't the guidance I got from this document, which is still on your website. That wasn't the guidance I got on this email. And we relied on that to make a major purchase. Okay? So I'm asking for your response, this, this body to respond to the email I sent last week requesting that you tell me that I can merge lots based on all the guidance in the past. And I know the concern is a big, a big house. I'm not going to build a big house. You know, most of you know, on 335 Cherokee, the house I built by hand, there's a ton of concrete and steel. That's going to be there for 2,000 years, and I don't plan to take it down. So I'm not going to merge lots and span over two lots. My intentions on the other lot are very clear, too. In fact, they're cast in stone. I have two square concrete pads, waiting for a small shed and a small gazebo. That's it. And if you want to restrict me, please do. I don't plan on building a bigger home. So right now, the lot coverage is 61% in Sagamore. There's precedent here in Old Town that it can be 40%. Give me 40%. I promise, I'm not building a bigger house. So that's all I'm asking. Could you please respond and let me know if that's a reasonable request? Because I think it's a win-win. I think it's defendable if someone ever comes up and says, why did you do that? There's lots of documentation that says I could. And it's also, I think, just a reasonable request. So I know it's hard to get in front of you, so that's why I came tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments and appreciate your patience working through this. We will get you a response. Any additional public comment? Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, public comment is closed, and we're on to our project updates section of the evening. And our project update tonight is the Rock Creek Parkway 2026 Reconstruction Project. We've got our Public Works Director, Brandon Richards here.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Let me pull the presentation. Yes, so we want to give you an update on the Rock Creek Parkway Reconstruction Project, which is planned for 2026 construction. We're nearing the end of design and plan to finish design, actually, this month, pending the feedback from this meeting. I sent the design plans in your packet. I don't plan to walk through those at the meeting. If you have any questions, happy to answer them, but I'm focused on a couple intersections and a couple areas. Christine's here as well. She's the project manager for the project. Just briefly, the scope of work, full reconstruction of Rock Creek Parkway from Indiana to 88th Street. Then we're going to skip the section that was reconstructed about eight, nine years ago near Enterprise Street, and then pick up reconstruction roughly from Honey Creek Lane to Colton Road. I'll get into each intersection. We actually have a slide dedicated to each intersection, so I won't talk about those here. And just stop me if you have any questions. We talked to you last July when we pulled the bid and we are looking at reconstruction. We did a, the Geotech and Civil Engineer, we did several borings throughout the corridor, and then came up with a pavement design. I included that here, but not to get too far in the math. For the majority of the road, they recommended four and a half inches of asphalt, 12 inches of chemically treated subgrade, 16 and a half inch total. The worst area was at the 88th Street Roundabout, where they recommended five inches of asphalt and 12 inches of chemically, chemically treated subgrade. The chemically treated subgrades we do on all of our reconstruction projects, it's a mixture of flash and cement as subgrade stabilization. Based on the recommendation, we went with the five inches of asphalt that was at 88th Street throughout the whole corridor. So we're looking at a five-inch pavement section. For comparison, we did roughly nine inches of asphalt through other sections of Rock Creek, and we estimate about 1.5 million savings with this four inches of asphalt reduction in this section versus a nine-inch thickness.
Brandon, I have a question. With the decreased thickness, does that in any way impact the life expectancy of the pavement?
Can, so we have a design life of the road for 25 years. So we did a design life calculation, and that's what this math is. We actually have a whole Geotech report I could share with you if you're interested. So that's how they came up with the pavement thickness. So basically, what they found is if we did seven or nine inches, we wouldn't, it wouldn't help us no more in that 25-year design life. With a five-inch thickness, we can do asphalt rehabilitation, like a mill and overlay, and we have plenty of asphalt there in subgrade to do that in the future, to extend that life after the 25-year design life.
So would it be fair to say that the five inches sort of optimizes the longevity of the road and gives us options in the future?
Yeah, it's by far the best bang for the buck and gives us, meets our design life goal.
Okay.
And that thickness.
Great, thank you.
So we'll walk through kind of each intersection. So the first one's Rock Creek Parkway in Indiana. The project will pick up just on the west side of this intersection where the previous project stopped. We will be removing the right turn lane that's currently flex posted off and doing the same landscaping restoration we did near, I'm having my blank Pickin Avenue. Everything else will go back as is. We won't put the green bike lane striping across the intersection that's created some confusion and just some additional lines. But otherwise, that, all the other striping will be as is today. Based on the public feedback from in 2024, we are moving forward with a one-lane roundabout at Coal Creek Drive. That's what we show here. It is the value engineered option, and it would maintain one lane going eastbound all the way to the 88th Street Roundabout. Nothing's really changed with this roundabout design from when we saw it with the previous design in that section. But we did, based on our feedback with council last time, we are doing a bid alternative with a right turn lane removal at Coal Creek Drive. So this will be a bid alternative with a bid package, where we just look at removing the right turn lanes, both eastbound, eastbound and westbound, going back with that landscape restoration. In this configuration, we would maintain the two lanes up to 88th Street and leaving 88th Street as well. With both approaches, we're bringing everything up to ADA standards with directional curb ramps, et cetera. Any questions on the Coal Creek Drive intersection? So really, no change from what you saw with the previous design in July. We just now have this bid alternative in there.
Hey, Brandon, just a question, because I wasn't quick enough. If you go back to the Indiana Street intersection, I think with the T-Mobile fiber, they tore out a huge chunk, chunk of sidewalk and just replaced it with asphalt. Is that all going to get repaired by them or by us as part of this?
That will be repaired.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Brandon, with, with the bid alternative at Rock Creek Parkway and Coal Creek Drive, so going southeast from that intersection down to 88th. So if there's a roundabout at Coal Creek Drive, then it, it's thinned down to one lane in each direction. And on this bid alternative, we're preserving two lanes in each direction. And I believe you said that then the 88th roundabout would stay two lanes? Is that?
So we wouldn't, we have the same design for the 88th Street Roundabout with either configuration. So I can show you that.
Okay.
The only difference is, we, with the roundabout going down to one lane and the distance between the two roundabouts, the design engineer recommended to keep it one lane between the two.
Right, right, right.
If we don't take that one-lane roundabout, then we'll keep the two lanes up to the roundabout.
Okay. So, so the design for the roundabout improvements at 88th is going to be the same whether we do the roundabout at Coal Creek Drive or the bid alternative narrowed intersection?
Correct. And I have that on the next slide if we're ready.
Yep.
Actually, yeah. So when you come back to the board with the cost for these things at bid, the bid alternative, you know, one of the things that we don't have is, is speed data on anything on Rock Creek, and this is my directions issue with Rock Creek, Rock Creek east of Coal Creek Drive. So basically downhill before you hit the roundabout. You see, you go through Coal Creek Drive, and you've already passed a speed radar sign that's between Indiana and Coal Creek Drive. And that's where we see a lot of acceleration. And so, you know, as we already have learned, between McAslin and Pitkin and McAslin in Indiana, after this roadway enhancement, we did not see any slowdown in traffic. So I'd like to know what our data is going into this decision. If after the reconstruction, we see no slowdown in data, are we actually setting ourselves up for, you know, people to be going faster between Indiana and 88th Street if we don't do the roundabout? Right? Like, I get the cost analysis that we're going to go through, and it's super important, but I also want to overlay that with the speed data that we have today, the speed data that we could have, is that conversation, especially compared to what we did last summer.
Yeah, I understand, Neil. And we can collect speed data in this section based on today's information. I mean, what we typically see is speeds do go up with newly paved roads. My anticipation would be that we would see similar speeds that we see today, maybe slightly increased, like half mile per hour.
Yeah. My, my concern is between that leg, my guess is most people are doing 40 today. And if it goes higher, you know, it's not much problematic.
No, I agree.
Thanks.
So the 88th Street Roundabout, so what you see here would be the configuration is if we had a roundabout at Coal Creek Drive. So you have the one lane leaving 88th Street toward Coal Creek Drive, and then we have the one lane coming in. So what would change here is if we didn't do a roundabout at Coal Creek Drive, you'd have two lanes coming eastbound toward this roundabout. With this configuration of one lane, we do expand it to two lanes at the roundabout. So it'd be very similar to how the 88th Street approaches, where you have a single lane coming in, then you have two lanes, one that's kind of a dedicated right and one that goes through the roundabout. The way this is designed now, we would have that left, dedicated left turn lane if you're coming eastbound on Rock Creek Parkway. So basically, if you want to go down 88th Street, you'd need to be in the left, and you'd stay and hug that left lane and go on 88th Street. And then the other lane would be a through lane through the roundabout. So improvements at this roundabout are around the, around the roundabout itself, the median of the roundabout. We'll be changing the roundabout with striping in this section. So the goal is to slow traffic down to, as you go around the roundabout. We're also extending the pork chop islands on all three approaches. So coming eastbound, you can see where the existing island is and where the new one is. The biggest change is at 88th Street. We're bringing in that island down and taking away, right now, it's two lanes that go through this roundabout. If you want to go on Rock Creek Parkway, you could be in either the left or the right lane to go through the roundabout. With the proposed design changes, if you're in the right lane, you'd be going to 88th Street toward Monarch, K8, Louisville. If you're in the left lane, you'd be going through the roundabout. We do think this would improve the safety and visibility of drivers that approach 88th Street. As part of the design process, we did evaluate the level of service of the roundabout. If we did take away this right turn lane and this right turn lane, specifically, they found that the level of service at the roundabout would drop down to a D in future scenarios. A level of service D doesn't mean you need to do anything, but it does mean the delays are getting uncomfortable for drivers. We didn't see a level of service D if we took away one lane at this approach. So if that's something council wanted to do, we could theoretically remove this lane. If we started getting into curb and gutter adjustments through the roundabout, it would increase the price quite a bit. And if we took the lane away with striping, that'd be the option if we wanted to get rid of the second lane. But this is where the design team landed for this roundabout.
Hey, Brandon, for removing the, the second lane heading toward Coal Creek, is that curb and gutter? Is that stripe? Or how would that be accomplished?
You're talking about this section here?
Exactly, yeah.
This will be striping.
Okay.
Yep. So we were going to accomplish all of this with striping. We do have existing bus stop approximately here. So the bus, will we use that lane still for the bus stop? The other bus stop on this side as well? So they'd still use that area? And otherwise, it would just be striped off?
Okay.
Yep.
And Brandon, just a question on your level of service analysis. If, is that on today's traffic data or the forecasted 2030 traffic data?
I believe that was future, future traffic, yeah.
Okay. So that's kind of contemplating Redtail?
Yeah.
Or Zaharias?
Yes.
At all?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So this, this roundabout is one of the intersections that probably has the most minor accidents in town. I mean, there's, there's the section over by, by Colton and McAslin, you know, that, that's, that's a, a single lane roundabout that seems to, to function without really incident. We've got the, the two-lane roundabout at Main Street and McAslin, and we've had some incidents over there. And then we've got other intersections that are problematic. But I guess the, the question that I have is, if, if the McAslin and Colton roundabout can, can function as a single lane, you know, why couldn't this? If, if that has higher, higher traffic loads and is projected to have higher traffic loads going forward, I just wonder if, like, maybe this might be the time to kind of reevaluate it, because it seems like if the, the accidents are happening, it's, it's happening because we've got two lane, two cars that are sideswiping each other, right? There, one's trying to get over to make the right turn, not recognizing that there's somebody else in the roundabout at the same time. So if you had a single lane roundabout, you'd avoid recognizing that it would slow, slow the progress through the roundabout, but it would avoid accidents. Any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, it's definitely something we could do as part of the project. We would probably want to change the approaches. I mean, the, the peak for this, this, this intersection sees a higher peak hour than Colton, McAslin specifically, especially with the school traffic. And I think that's why we would see a level of service D with these two approaches, where we don't see that at Colton and McAslin, just because the peak's so much lower. So, I mean, especially during school hour like this round, this approach can back up, and this approach can back up. It's short-lived, but it does back up some during school drop-off. With this design, we have reduced the pedestrian crossings for both approaches, eastbound and westbound. We've taken away a lane that pedestrians would be crossing. So that improves safety. And really, in all intents and purposes, we have taken it down to a single lane aside from this southern section.
Well, that's, that's kind of why I'm thinking, like, if, if 88th is single lane, and then the section to the west of the roundabout going towards Coal Creek Drive is now going to be a single lane, you, you really only have the double lane going to the south out towards Colton. So, you know, there is, you know, an opportunity right now. It would be, it would function basically kind of similar to the way the Rock Creek, I'm sorry, the Colton Road and McAslin roundabout functions, because there you have McAslin in each direction is one lane, and then Colton is, is two lanes.
Well, it would be a little different than we have two approach lanes if we kept that at 88th and on, if we kept this two approach lanes and these two.
Well, we have two approach lanes at Colton that
merges.
Merge into one.
Yep. Yeah. So that's the only difference here. So I, I, my recommendation would still be to keep the two approach lanes, especially from the westbound traffic and the southbound traffic on 88th and this traffic. We could eliminate this second lane here and make this a single lane based on traffic volumes without any additional delays, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that we necessarily need to make the change. I just wanted to throw out the, the topic for conversation. I guess the more, the more I'm thinking about it in general, living with roundabouts. I guess the more I'm thinking about it in general, living with roundabouts like we do here in Superior, I think the single lane roundabouts are just safer for pedestrians or safer for motorists. You know, they might not be as efficient in terms of moving traffic, but there's just more kind of margin for error with, you know, just having a single lane versus having two cars in traffic at the same time. There's just the opportunity for them to sideswipe or not pay attention, then hit a bicyclist or a pedestrian, so.
Yeah, I think the one thing is, and I go through both these roundabouts a lot, what's really interesting about this one is the sheer volume of people that do the three-quarter turn, you know, because they're on Rock Creek and they want to go to 88th versus like with Colton, you just can, I'd see the vast majority of the traffic is just going straight through McCaslin. And that's why that intersection of Coal, Rock Creek going west, you know, the two lane approach is like so critical because so many cars are just, you know, taking that sharp right over to 88th Street. So if we went to the one lane roundabout, then we got to neck Rock Creek down from, say, Enterprise all the way up to the roundabout, which might be the right thing to do. It's a volume issue ultimately because of the Monarch schools, and that's the key thing, right? Like, that peak volume data is going to be really more important. The benefit here, though, is that is the intersection that a huge number of kids on e-bikes cross, you know, to get over and go straight up. And if that's narrowed down, one more lane is just that much more safe. So it's like the multiple edge, you know, benefits of so many different things. If you make it a little harder to kind of get through the intersection in terms of volume, then maybe more kids will ride e-bikes, but, you know, I don't know.
Just to clarify, are you suggesting that the entire roundabout be one lane or just the southern portion of the roundabout be one lane?
No, I mean, I think it would be a safer roundabout and frankly, a better functioning one if it was one lane. I mean, I wanted Rock Creek Parkway to be one lane in each direction too, but I lost that fight. But, you know, I just, given kind of what Neil was saying also about the traffic going to Monarch, you know, I think that the McCaslin-Main Street roundabout is pretty scary. And I think that the McCaslin-Colton roundabout is fantastic. And there's a lot of people that are cutting through Superior from Arvada going to Boulder every morning and coming back in the evening. McCaslin's a pretty heavily trafficked road, and that roundabout functions really well. I mean, there's bicyclists and pedestrians trying to get to the open space, but they have like one point of, you know, a viewpoint where they're looking to make sure that it's, you know, safe to cross. This one's just a, it's a scarier roundabout, and I think that having two lanes is just, it just adds a complexity to the intersection that invites crashes and invites kids getting hit, so.
Brandon, in the concept of where we did reduce Rock Creek down to one lane, top to bottom, what was the plan for the roundabout? Was it going to stay as two lanes?
No, we would have made it one lane in this scenario.
Yeah, so we have pencil sketches of going down that direction already. Yeah, I mean, just as someone who uses it multiple times a day, like that south, the two lane piece of it has always been awkward, because we ended up doing, as a person in the right lane, just accelerates through there, and it freaks out the other driver because, you know, they're just zip and pass it. It's always been a bizarro thing, because if you're coming in from 88th Street, you don't, can I merge, can I not merge, because the other car's like passing me on the right? It's always been weird.
And, you know, we don't need to necessarily like move all the curb and gutter, you know, here. Like, a lot of this could be taken care of with striping and just make it a, you know, a one lane roundabout, but.
Yeah, if we went down to one lane, I would like to just do it with striping, just because if there is an emergency, it would be nice to have that function as an easier way for people to evacuate, not jump in curbs.
I just think that like, you know, if we have it going from one lane on 88th and going from one lane, you know, from the west, then all of a sudden thrusting two-thirds of the roundabout into a two-lane intersection is just potentially confusing. And people are going to go to the right and realize like, oh, I got to go to the left, or vice versa, they're going to go to the left and, you know, need to cut over to go to 88. And, you know, then there's the potential for, you know, smacking into the people that are on Rock Creek Parkway in the left lane there, so.
You know, the difference, Mark, I see with this versus what we see at Colton, Colton's flat. You know, you can, any approach that you can only see across the median to the side, so it's not like there's a visibility issue. This one you cannot. You cannot tell if anybody's coming around it, which direction they're going in. I'm really concerned about dropping this to one lane, just because there's going to be suddenly this Formula One mentality where you've got to get pole position, especially if you'll notice that southbound coming out of 88th is two lanes into one lane, and you've got a car in the turning circle which has the right of way, and I can guarantee you that topmost lane is going to gun in every time, they're going to try to get ahead of that car. And Brandon, how far away does that one lane go back into two lanes?
You're talking about over here?
Yep.
So this one lane would be maintained all the way through?
To the next turning circle.
Yep. If we, so.
Well, let me ask you this, and before you say it, and I apologize for interrupting you, then at that, where those two, you have those two blocks at the, where the 88th comes down and hits the turning circle up to the top, can you put a stop sign there? Because I would feel a lot better if you drop it to one lane, if those cars come to a complete stop, they have to look, and then they can go through the one lane, because that's the big argument I'm going to fight you on, the one lane thing. That is a really dangerous way right now, and it's two lanes, and I'm almost always caught up by some kid going through it. I mean, I get it, you're 16, you're in a rush, you're in a hot rod, you think you're, you know, Lando Norris just won the Formula One, if you pay attention to that, probably not. It's, if you want safety, crunching this thing down in my mind is not getting safety. Putting a stop sign there would make me feel better about it, I can listen to that argument and maybe consider it, but if that's just free-flowing traffic running right into the roundabout, I'm not in favor of dropping it to one lane. There's got to be something to keep the cars that are coming southbound out of 88th from just running into the turning circle, thinking they've got the right of way, because nobody knows how to run and drive in a turning circle that you, the right of way is the person in the turning circle, not if you can beat them to the certain point. So that's the one consideration I'd have, put a stop sign there.
I don't think I've seen a stop sign before a roundabout, though, like, and part of this is like making it consistent with other intersections that people are used to driving. And like, and the whole point of a roundabout is to avoid stops, it's to allow traffic to continuously flow, so. You know, I'm not trying to throw a crazy wrench in here, I just, the more I was looking at this, I just had the thought that this intersection could potentially be benefited by narrowing it down to a single lane, given the fact that two-thirds of the feeders are single lanes, but I'll defer to the traffic experts.
I think the one, so my recommendation would be to maintain the approaches we have here and here, just to avoid that level of service D in the future, because people can get frustrated with that and then make bad decisions. If we did want to take a lane, I have no problems with keeping this eastbound one lane up to the roundabout, and then basically this outside lane would pretty much just be dead. We could even, we could even look at making it a bike lane of some sort. I'd have to talk to the civil team to see if that's possible. But I'd be fine taking away this lane here, if that makes sense, if that's what council would like us to evaluate.
I think that would be good, because I feel like, to Mark's point, that's where I see a lot of people not quite sure, you've got the through lane, but then people coming around from 88th don't quite know what to do, and to Neil's point, they're terrified of the people who kind of slingshot themselves around that. I mean, to me, that feels like the most dangerous part of the roundabout.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think that's actually, you know, 90% of the issue in most cases, and, you know, while a stop sign sounds reasonable, it actually violates the MUTCD, good design guidelines for a traffic circle, so it would create different issues of us going down a different path. But, you know, from a paint perspective, I think it'd be worth going down that point of eliminating that sort of southbound lane, realizing that people will drive over paint. I mean, we've had paint markings in this traffic circle for years that people have ignored, and they're all gone now, so, but it's a good start. You know, I think the only issue with paint is, is you get back to where it connects to Rock Creek Parkway, as a pedestrian, you're still crossing the same distance, so.
Wouldn't you consider, Neil, getting rid of southbound on 88th, getting rid of those two lanes and just make it one lane entering, going two lanes to one?
Well, I mean, that gets into the huge issue. We don't, I mean, we got to stop opining based on what we think, and all I am doing is what, based on I think. I think the volumes here are just so high at certain peak times, it's really hard to neck everything down in one lane. Like, Colton and McCaslin functions very differently. This thing has such incredible high peak volume. Like, it's insane, that mo-hi traffic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right? And that's the part, is like, those two lanes get stacked up quickly.
Let's do this. Let me sketch up what this would look like with a single lane. I mean, we're not going to be, I'll get into the schedule later, but, well, I'll touch on schedule now. So the goal was to finish design in December and bid this out in February, so we have a 60-day lag that we won't be affecting Critical Paths. What I can do is, we can work with the design team and sketch up what this could look like, and then come back at a January meeting and just talk about this intersection, if that works for council. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, from my personal opinion is, I just wanted to raise the issue. I don't want to hold up the construction. I know that you all have thought long and hard about this, and you've got expertise that, you know, we here on the DIAS don't have, but I just want to make sure that we're at least considering any improvements that are available to us while we're tearing the roads up anyway and spending the money on it, so. You know, what we don't want to do is spend a bunch of money on something and then have buyers remorse and want to do something different afterwards, right? So.
So I could take that action and bring it back to one of the January meetings with a sketch here, and that won't affect our Critical Path schedule. If that works.
Sounds good.
Okay. And I didn't touch on, but we are going to add another flashing beacon here that's when this beacon, when this crossing's activated, this one will flash. The design team was concerned with having them all flash at the same time, because they felt like it would just, people would just assume there's never a pedestrian, because they never see one when it's flashing. But what we're going to do is, when these buttons are activated, there's a beacon that'll flash here, so if someone's turning right, they see it flashing before they get to the crosswalk. So I didn't touch on that, but that's part of the design. We are looking at removing the right turn lane at Enterprise Street, so while there's no roadway reconstruction here, we are looking to remove that right turn lane. I did want to bring it to council's attention that as part of the multi-use path project, when we did the 36 bikeway and extended all the way up to Honey Creek Drive, we did put in a flagstone in Rock. So when we do remove this right turn lane, we'll have to take this out and redo it to make it be transition and match, so that's how we're proceeding. So just want to bring that to your attention. Coal Creek Drive and Honey Creek Lane, just, there is no right turn lane going eastbound into Honey Creek, but we will be removing the right turn lane going east, sorry, that's westbound. Going eastbound, we will be removing that right turn lane, leaving 88th Street headed toward Colton Road. It's currently flex posted off, but we'll remove that, same as Pitkin.
Brandon, before you, I don't know if you're done with this slide, it looked like you're getting ready to advance. I was only going to ask if we're going to add a crosswalk on the, for lack of directions, the left-hand side of this intersection.
We didn't currently have that in design. We are extending the island out on the, this side here, to give a kind of buffer, if you're crossing the road and you don't feel safe to make it, you can stop here, and there will be an RFB here, but we weren't planning to add a crosswalk on this side.
Which makes sense, it's just beforehand, the crossing distance there is like literally like a cubic mi, I mean, it's a million miles across, like, so it never made any sense to have one there, but that's where the bus shelter is, right? So you're doing two jog legs to kind of get across, because the two bus shelters are diagonal to one another, and now that we've narrowed a lot of those lanes, it might be something to consider is to add, just like a Pitkin, you know, basically four ways across.
Okay, we can look at that too and bring that up in January as well. Rock Creek Parkway at Tyler Drive, this is where Bell Flat Irons is, removing that right turn lane, as shown, currently flex posted off. And this will really reduce that crossing distance, you can kind of see where the existing curb is and the new curb will be, so that'll reduce that crossing distance at Tyler Drive.
Brandon, one last question on this one. So of all the places we put in the flex post, I think people have hit the flex post most often at this corner, and I don't know why that is. Do you guys have any data in terms of like just feedback from this intersection in terms of just why it's been so hard to adapt to the flex post?
I think it's, oh, sorry.
I was only going to say, I mean, is that setting ourselves up for a different issue when we go curb and gutter, or is it just going to fix, you know, the other issue?
I think it's because we currently have flex posts that come way out here into the travelway, because we're trying to slow that turn speed. So you can see that last flex post is literally right where that cursor is, so that distance will be reduced. So I don't think we'll have the same issue with that, it'll be a more natural turn too, but it will be a full 90-degree turn, so it will require cars to slow down in making that turn, but I think that's why we have so many hits here.
Okay, thanks.
And then Rock Creek Parkway at Colton, so our reconstruction will stop right here at the approach. We are showing some asphalt aging here, so we are going to mill an overlay, a portion of Rock Creek Circle up to about this point, but striping will go back exactly like it is at this location. Briefly, we are going to bid Honey Creek Drive mill and overlay with the Rock Creek Parkway reconstruction to get better unit pricing. We do have a few full-depth patches on Honey Creek Drive, one up here near the entrance, and a couple as you approach the yardway site and future O&amp;M site will be some reconstruct as well, but this work will be bid in conjunction with Rock Creek Parkway, and we'll coordinate this with the O&amp;M facility.
Sorry, Brandon, one quick question. I know it's going to be coordinated with the O&amp;M facility, but when this is under construction, will the public still have access to the park down there, or will it be, you know, closed for a week so they can do it?
We won't have any closures. We might have a one-day closure during the reconstruction, but that'd be, that'd be it. During the mill and overlay, they'll do half at a time.
Okay, thank you.
Just tying this back to Vision Zero, so we just finished our Vision Zero action plan and our Transportation Master Plan, so we reviewed those when we were doing these improvements. Rock Creek Parkway and Colton Road, we're basically doing all the improvements that are in the Vision Zero with one exception, and that's installing raised crossing channels at the right turn islands. So what that would be is a raised right, a raised kind of island here for pedestrian crossing at these two right turns. Staff wasn't recommending doing that at this time, just the way the road configuration is, this is a high pedestrian area. If we did do that with this project, we'd have to adjust drainage, likely putting in a storm drain inlet before the crossing, because water can't go over those, or we'd have to put chase drains in. So staff recommendation was not to do the raised crossings at these locations, even though it was in the Vision Zero action plan. So we want to bring that to council's attention and see if that's something you were interested in and or wanted us to investigate further.
I'm curious, like, what's a ballpark cost for moving the drain?
So I think we would be looking at north of $50,000 to do these, count the concrete work and the storm drainage work. I don't know how much north of 50, I don't think we would go over 100, but it would be somewhere in that range, probably.
All right, thanks.
And we haven't, I looked at the exit data for the last, I think I went back 15 years, I hadn't noticed any bike or pedestrian accidents at either one of these crossings either, so I can't say there's not been any close calls, but we will be making all the ramps ADA compliant and improving that, but we hadn't had any accidents previously at these locations.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's one of those lagging indicators, right? If someone doesn't feel safe in a section, just don't go, right? So if you make it safer, and Boulder's done this up and down 28th Street, they've continued to just improve the safety, and you see more and more people using them over time. And if lots of people from Bell Flat Irons want to cross the street, but we haven't made it safe, then yes, of course, there's no data to support doing it, but it's that never-ending, you know, sort of battle between cost versus safety and how and when you make these enhancements.
And keep in mind, we do have that, I think most people at Bell Flat Irons cross closer to Safeway, because we have that mid-block crossing there.
Yeah.
We didn't do a pedestrian count here, but I feel like a lot of the crossings are along Rock Creek Parkway in this direction at this intersection, and I see more on this side than I do on this side personally, living in this area.
There's a lot of kids that go to the community center and then go over to Safeway, so they cross right there on the west side of that intersection, so. I, I'm okay not, you know, following staff's recommendation and not moving forward with any, you know, raised crossings at this time, but I'd also be supportive if that was staff's recommendation to, we could find the budget for it, if that was warranted.
And then just going through the Vision Zero plan at Honey Creek and Coal Creek Drive, we are doing all the suggested improvements at that location, and then Rock Creek Parkway at Coal Creek Drive, also doing all the alternatives, I mean, the signage is really easy to do, so we'll be doing these alternatives as part of the project too.
Brandon, just a question, is there a set rule on some of these signs in terms of how far they have to be from intersections? Because it feels like we've got some that are really close and some that are really far, and I don't know what the rule is.
There's guidelines, so it's based on speed, generally invisibility. So, and then there could be conflicts in the field. So we, and then there could be conflicts in the field that where we adjust those. But generally there's MUTCD guidance on sign spacing. And then lastly, on Rock Creek Parkway and Tyler, we are doing all the improvements except for one at this location as well. So the Vision Zero recommended a kind of mid-block island here. So you, a pedestrian could stop and wait. We did talk to Bell Flatiron to see if that's something that had come up from their residents or if they've heard that concern. And they expressed that they hadn't heard that concern specifically, though they do know it's a long crossing. This crossing distance will be shortened quite a bit, so we're actually in compliance. We're going from 106 feet to 88 feet. So there's no mid-block crossing required. It would also be kind of weird. We wouldn't extend this island all the way out just due to cost. We would actually be looking at just putting in kind of a second island here for that refuge. But staff recommendation was to not do that rec, that improvement as well, since we're shortening the crossing distance already and making it safer. Looking at the budgets, we have budgeted 5.2 million. This is the engineer's estimate, keep in mind. They didn't have much of a difference between the bid alternative and the roundabout. I do think we'll see a larger bid difference between those two, but the market will tell us when we bid it out. But I think we'll see this come in more than 200K lower than the roundabout personally. Their estimate came in at 5.4 with roundabout, 5.2 with the bid alternative. So it is about 230,000 over budget as designed. Again, this is an engineer's estimate, so the market will tell us what the true cost is. But I wanted to share that information with you.
If the bid alternate is selected and we keep the section of Rock Creek Parkway between Coal Creek Drive and 88th as four lanes instead of two lanes, is, is that section of the road changing at all? Is it just a striping issue or is, is, is the asphalt any different?
It's purely striping, so it would just be, there would be some striping cost savings, but it'd be pretty minimal. And I don't think the improvements we're talking about, if we took away that southern lane would change these numbers much since it would mostly be striping, but we can look at that cost too when we come back in January. I think that's all I had planned, unless I missed anything. Unless there's any questions.
Questions?
Just a comment. The striping on Colton between Tyler and Rock Creek Parkway has been, you know, the one where we got rid of the third lane that people were just merging into. I don't think it, I don't know what, I think it's called Summit on the Broomfield side and Tyler and our side.
Oh, yes, okay.
Right. I think that's been amazing. You know, we, we striped, we got rid of that third, you know, unneeded lane. And so far, I think most people have been behaving and waiting to merge until the green boxes. So thank you for that.
And we are working with Broomfield to try to fix that traffic signal at Tyler that is malfunctioning, so. Yeah, contacted multiple folks, so they're, they're aware of it.
I'll, I'll just add my comment here that I really appreciate all of staff's work on, on putting this together. And obviously this is a huge project that we were originally planning on, on getting done, at least partly in, in 2025. But circumstances changed and I'm confident that we're going to execute this satisfactorily in 2026. This is going to be a huge project and obviously it's going to inconvenience a lot of people as the construction is, is happening. And it's impacting the Fourth of July downhill mile and parade, which won't be happening as a result of this, this project. But this, this road's in dire need of reconstruction and it'll be good to get this thing done and not have to worry about it for the next 25 years. So thank you for all of your attention to detail and giving us some grace with some of the questions we're asking with the, the roundabout improvements. And look forward to getting this bid out and on schedule and completed before school is in session for the fall of '26. And that's the plan, right?
That is the plan, yep. So the goal is, is like I touched on the bid in February because we really can't start paving work until April anyway. So we'll bid in February and bring it, hopefully bring it to council in March, the second March meeting. If there is one this year, if there's not, we'll adjust and then start construction in April. So there would be some overlap with the current school year, but that would be the goal. It would be to get it done before the next school year.
Excellent. All right. Typically, we don't on our project updates, but I'll open it up for public comments. It's a big project, so come on up to, to the lectern and.
Alan Frobeater, Rock Creek. First of all, I say I really appreciate you looking for ways to save money as a taxpayer. A million five is, is significant savings to go to the thinner asphalt. But I actually share Counselor Foster's question on the life. I hear what you said about a 25-year life analysis, but analysis only goes so far. It just seems that coming down from an original nine inches, going down below seven inches, which I think you said was the town standard, can't result in more frequent resurfacing of the road, especially with our heavier trash trucks. And I actually thought that the town design standards required at least six inches, even with an analysis on it. So I just, again, don't want to be back here in a few years having the road torn up again because it was a little thinner than it should be. It just was my concern. Thanks, but thanks for doing this.
And I can speak to that some more. So currently, Rock Creek, we found that it has eight to nine inches of asphalt with no subgrade whatsoever. So it's on the clay soil and that clay soil has a swell potential. So what the big issue we're seeing is that 12 inches of chemically treated subgrade is basically going to be a concrete base underneath the road. And that's where we're going to get most of the structural strength for the road. The asphalt itself is not giving you that structural strength. It is currently, but it won't be with this future design. So, and, and no matter what thickness of asphalt we do, if we do five inches, nine inches, 12 inches, 18, you're going to get surface cracking eventually. That's where you see most of your failures in surface cracking. If we have a good subgrade, we won't see that alligator cracking that shows subgrade failure. So with surface cracking, that's easier to fix. We've been doing the reclamite restoration to regenerate that surface. But then we can also do a mill and overlay in years. Mill and overlays pennies on the dollar compared to a reconstruct. So I feel confident with this design as is, especially with that subgrade that we're getting, that chemically treated subgrade. That's really what's given us the strength in this roadway design. Yeah, the town does have design standards, so, but those were done based on, no, it's just a standard without looking at each specific road. So looking at that geotechnical analysis, we're able to adjust that. And we've done that on some private projects too. I know the hotels adjusting their design based on the geotech recommendation and analysis. We're actually doing the same swell borings on Indiana Street. And unfortunately, it doesn't look like we'll be able to get away with five inches of asphalt on Indiana Street due to the soil conditions on that street, even though it has a lower traffic volume. But I think we took about seven to nine borings in this section to come up with that calculation.
Thanks, Brandon.
We don't, but we, we can definitely, it's a public document that can be shared.
Anybody else in the public like to make public comment? Anybody on Zoom like to make public comment? All right, seeing none, public comments closed. Thanks, Brandon. We'll look forward to seeing the follow-up in January and, and February.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're on to our consent agenda, which is item five. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time.
So moved.
Got a motion from Councilmember Craycraft.
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu. And let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Serbu?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Passes unanimously and we're on to item six, which is a consideration of a resolution of the Town Council of the Town Superior approving a professional services agreement with Davis Partnership Architects for an initial concept design for the Marshall Fire Remembrance Gathering Area Project.
Good evening, Town Council. Leslie Clark, Parks Recreation, Open Space. I'm here to just introduce this item and then I'm going to pass it over to some of our representatives who've been working very hard on this. So just as a reminder, this project has been going on since 2023, so two and a half years. We've had residents and, and council committee members meeting on this, this topic to try and come up with a remembrance project for the Marshall Fire gathering area. And they've worked really hard on this. And they formed a subcommittee in 2024. And they came to you all in February of 2025 to ask to kind of bring you up to date on the project, but then to also ask for some funding to kick this off. So that's where we are today is we did a RFP for Design Services. And we had two proposals. The subcommittee met and reviewed both proposals and they are recommending that we move forward with Davis design for this. Davis has a short presentation they're going to do as well. But I really wanted to turn this over to Dalton Valet, who's been one of the members on the subcommittee. He's also a co-chair with our Historical Commission. And he was just going to talk a little bit about that public input and how we got to the decision we did today. And then we'll move into the presentation after that. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Welcome, Dalton.
Thank you very much. My name is Dalton Valet. I'm here representing not just the Historical Commission, but also the Marshall Fire Remembrance Subcommittee. Was spoken a bit earlier, we've been working on this really since 2023. One of our primary goals was to get as much input as possible from the community itself. We've had multiple surveys to identify what was basically the most essential qualities to capture the town's overall emotions associated with such a historic and traumatic event as the Marshall Fire. And then in identifying a partner to work with for a project like this, we really wanted to find someone who understood the Marshall Fire and the impact that this had on residents. And I'll just say during the presentation with Davis, after we reviewed their proposal and their qualifications, each member of us was completely blown away. A number of us were even moved to tears just because of the raw emotions that were associated with this. And it really did show, I think more so than other projects, that we as members of this committee have seen before, the impact that this has and that this is truly going to be a spot that captures, I think, Superior's resilience, Louisville's resilience as well, along with the entirety of Boulder County and the state of Colorado after an event like this. And I really have to thank Davis in large part for capturing so much of this into such a beautiful and moving design. So with that, I think I can pass it over.
And I'll pull up your presentation here, sorry.
We want to thank you for having us here tonight. It's an honor to be here. I'm Julie Meanan Eck with Land Design Partnership with.
Lupe Cantu, Principal of Davis Partnership Architects. I, I want to very much stress that this effort is very much a partnership with Land Design. We actually took this upon the response to the RFP a little bit on the sly. No one from our firms knew that we were doing this. And we very much have felt a kinship with this opportunity and really appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. I guess I make Joel. Sorry, did we go here? There we go. Okay, thank you all. So to begin, we would love to kind of take you through our thoughts and, and what resonated with us as it pertains to the imagery that very much came from the Marshall Fire. The very first of which, you know, understanding that within Superior, 398 structures were unfortunately set ablaze, that a lot of what came from those structures, especially from the residential structures, what remained was really anything that was masonry, foundations. And in this instance, it was the, the idea of the chimney. And, and that's very representative of, you know, the hearth of a home, a place where one gathers and where, where you have those memories. And so to see within the destruction that occurred, that the things that were left standing were very much resilient to that idea of memory. In this instance, it was the chimney that you see on your left, which, you know, I would love to kind of show that you have the fire box, which is where the, the fire actually resides. But then you also have these two points, which were the insets where the mantle used to be, where it used to actually connect with that chimney. And there was a void that was left there. But then on top of that, you have the notion of the, the actual flag of Colorado kind of speaking towards that sense of resilience and, and being able to kind of move forward. Obviously, the next image, that of Willie the Horse, very much speaking to the, the idea of, of the chaos of the fire itself. What was really happening and the fact that Willie had only opportunities or moments to kind of choose a direction. But in the end, you know, finding an opportunity to survive this, these flames and really look at this as not necessarily a, a remembrance of the fire, but also it's the ability to survive that fire. These next two images are very much, speak to how we were thinking through the project in that, you know, the fire decided, starting on December 30th. But it was alongside the first responders that you had the crease of nature that actually came and helps extinguish that fire. And this is a photo, you know, from that third day where that destruction was then covered by this kind of serene beauty of the snow that fell. And then very much on the image to the right, when nature itself alongside the resiliency of the community begins to rebuild as a kind of sign of, of the future.
So we'll be taking you how Lupe and I worked together. And this is just our concept and we know that there's a long way to go with this process. But not only taking those images that we saw earlier, but also taking the numbers that we heard, the 398, the, the date of the fire, the first call for, into the fire department, plus the story that was in the RFQ about how you went through the event, the response, the aftermath, the recovery. I was thinking of all these things as I was taking my daughter to college and driving through New Mexico. And then New Mexico has these beautiful layers of different colored rock. And it's the buff and then you get to the mixed and then you get to the red as you hit Arizona. With the image and with numbers spinning in my head, I got to the hotel that night and I called Lupe and I said, hey, what do you think of this? And we just bounced ideas off of each other and came to the idea that we have.
And I, I really want to reiterate of how unique this RFP process was. Oftentimes you'll find in any response to a, a kind of a proposal is that you get lost in the imagery. This RFP was very, very adamant that there was no imagery to be provided, that it really resonated in the idea. And it's the idea which allowed us to kind of explore how to keep these imagery, the, the notion of what we saw, how to allow it to resonate within the, the bigger context of a response towards the community. This is a sample shot of, of the page. We, we did cheat a little bit. We, we did keep in mind a, a small graphic that we resolved, as you saw on the sketch earlier, that resonated with us, but very much in an explanation of this idea of rings as they resonate towards time and place. And I just wanted to say one more thing, sorry about that. It's very important that, you know, within that idea of resonation of, that it was the concept of a place to gather. And that was very much hopefully what you'll see in the imagery that comes following these images.
So we used this idea of these rings to walk through what must have experienced during that time. Our first ring is what we called destruction. And it's a, the true plaza, it's the true memorial piece of this whole thing. It's the place to gather. It's, you'll see images later that it's got that chimney, that hearth involved in it. All the materials we're using represent the fire itself. It represents destruction and it holds a silence because it's so large that when people are exploring it, they still feel at peace and they have a chance to reflect. But also when you have an event, if you want to have a memorial day there on the day of the anniversary, it can hold enough people to be a part of that experience, even if it's just once a year. It's also the beginning of the journey through the process. And then we get to ring two, which we're calling displacement and absence. And this is where. And this is where it represents the idea of the, having to leave in a rush and having to gather just the few things you can gather and rush through these portals of one-way exits. And it changes in materials and it changes in the feeling of the experience that you take throughout this second ring. The third ring you'll see is the snowfall, snowfall and recognition, and it's an area of peace and reflection and looking out into the mountainside and looking down to the town. And it's a very solitude area. And then the fourth ring we call redemption, and it's the order of succession. It's the plantings that are growing back from such a destructive event, and it's just full of new life and new experience moving on. And so for our first ring, for destruction, we want to really be in the heat of the fire, no pun intended. We're using local paving that reflects the red of a fire. Our plant material is to be yellows and reds. The paving is in a red pattern. The benches are red, all local material, our boulders, everything will be red except this plinth that you will see with a structure in the middle that we'll describe here in a minute, but it's the whole inner, that inner ring that is going to be filled with this experience. Then the second ring, you start to break it down and it turns into darker grays and blacks. And again, it's all local material, but it's that feeling of displacement and the paving underneath could be a tumble where you're uneasy on your feet. The fire has already started. There's ash around. You're escaping. You don't know where you're going. There's one exit. The pathways are varied in sizes. It just very much reflects this area of confusion. We have some metal posts that you'll see in the next few slides and what we're planning on doing with those as well. Then the third ring is the snowfall and recognition. We turn to white. We turn to peaceful. Our plant material will be light grays and whites. It's very much a reflection of the snow and embracing that snow. And then the next, the outer ring, the redemption, you actually see from that third ring, there'll be a small mow strip in the grass that represents a ring, but you're really coming back into nature and you're hitting that existing grade and you're seeing the meadow regenerate and you're looking out into the mountains and you're looking into the town and you're able to reflect on moving forward. So this is in plan view, this is where it looks. It's right at the beginning of the trailhead and it's all ramping. We want to use the elements of a design that all people can experience together. There's not somebody taking the stairs off to the side or ramp off to the side. You're all having that same experience going through. Your experience is personal, but your physical environment will be the same and it's a focus of a component of universal design.
So a part of this, as we're looking towards that imagery, I'll beg to remember the kind of the snowfall image and how those foundations were cascading down the kind of overall landscape. In that effort to try to engage the landscape and make sure that we are very much a part of this landscape moving forward, we were, as Julie was mentioning, we are making sure that we're providing that kind of grade change. So upon that entry plaza, you actually are going down three and a half feet. Once you're down those main ramps, you've now descended another five feet. And then as you make your way towards that second ring and making your way towards the third, in the chaos of the fire, a representation of that fire, you now descend another six and a half feet. In grand total, you are actually descending 15 feet as a response to the overall gray that you see above you, very much so in an effort, like I said, to kind of ground ourselves into the landscape and into the moment and into the idea of remembrance.
So this is the beginning, the entrance plaza that we spoke to. Again, it's universal design, so there's the generous ramp that comes down into that top plaza. And what really set the curved design and the idea of the rings is it's such, the topography is so great and the ramping is extreme that we wanted a very graceful way to get down and get around. And the idea of the curve is very elegant, but it also takes up a lot of that depth that we're working with. So you can come into this point and approach the entrance into this upper plaza by going either direction to get there.
Once you're into that entry plaza, we had the opportunity to work with the selection committee in kind of refining the effort that we initially had shown them. And one of the responses was that this is really a remembrance that looks upon not only the city of Superior or town of Superior, but also towards the idea of the county as overall. And so a part of that was actually taking what essentially is the body of the rings and then adjusting them so that at the center of that ring, when you're looking down past the ramps, you not only see the town of Superior, but you're also kind of focusing towards the flat irons and the overall representation of what essentially is Boulder County. The idea of the hearth. There is a need to provide an opportunity to capture the moment that was the fire. And a part of that was also extending from the entry plaza, that same coloration into the rings so that you find a focal point of which you can then kind of understand that this is an object that very much is self-aware. You look through the center of the firebox and you see the town of Superior beyond. It's pushed off to the side to allow for that to have a clear view past the guardrails of your overall ramp, all of which is meant to kind of inspire someone to actually go from the entry plaza down that five feet of ramp to find what is the next opportunity. And this is where this notion of remembrance truly lies, that documents that day. So the idea of the chimney, the, what I was mentioning, the kind of the passage through of the firebox, looking beyond onto the town, but then also the, from the image that inspired us, the two areas of void where the mantle once lied, those are all meant to allow light so that on the day that you have, from the first time that a call was reached to 911, which was December 30th at 11:09, the sun begins to shade, it begins to shift and it begins to then shine through those openings. So it highlights not only this kind of overall, what we are considering to be a resin plinth that will eventually tell the story of that day, but also begins to shine through those openings in the mantle that then resonate to these smaller obelisks that you see on the right, which are very much speaking to the two lives that were lost that day.
So as we, before we carry on, you start to see, you know, the idea of the materials that we're using to give that red richness, the idea of the fire. What we're not showing behind us is we have what you call stadium seating, some steps that are making up the grade that you can sit on. This still is a place that you can gather anytime. It's not just a remembrance. It's a plaza for the community. It's a plaza for those using the trail. People might want to sit on those steps and just overlook your beautiful community and the mountains. So it's a place to be used year round and we thought that that was very important as part of the gathering place in the concept. So then you enter into the second ring, the dispersment, the tumble pavers, the meandering walks, the confusion is what it is. The plant material will be very structured, architectural. It changes form. So when the leaves drop, it's this craggy plant material that is symbol of the plants that might have survived in the first fire. We also have a series of these posts and these posts are, there's 398 of them, and they represent each structure that was lost. We thought we could do something with them, whether it be an address or a neighborhood or just a number, but there are 398 posts here that represent the structures that were lost in Superior. They also are going to serve as a wind noise maker. We're still trying to figure out how that may work, but the idea that this fire was exasperated by the wind, the wind has a story and we would like to have that story be audible as you're experiencing this. We can't stop the wind. You're going to hear it. It's part of the storytelling of the site.
As you make your way down through that overall second ring, we very much come to these opportunities where we can then kind of tell the story of that sense of resilience. In this instance, we actually showcase the use of that photo of Willie, who's the survivor. In this instance, it would be emblazoned onto a kind of a steel plate of which the element that's missing is the actual outline of Willie, indicating that there was a future for that resilience. It would be remiss of us to try to not also respond to opportunities to acknowledge the first responders. In this instance, as we make our way down, we can look for opportunities, especially in kind of areas like this retention wall that you see on the right, as an opportunity to then also acknowledge those first responders, very much indicating that it wasn't all just about survival, but it was also about the fact that it was a battle to kind of get to that point.
So this is the third and fourth ring, the third representing the snow, the peaceful setting. The benches are set far apart from each other so you can have individual points of reflection. It's also looking out into the outer ring where there's regrowth. This is also a portion of the project that we could have some educational purposes. The plants are all fire-wise plant material. The spacing of the white granite pavement is that of a fire break, enough distance to where you have planting, then you have the fire break before you have more planting. Some of those elements, because of the wind, would not have stopped this fire, but it is something that we could educate the community on and always be cognizant of the proper way in this community and all of Colorado that we need to be wise to the fire settings. Also off of the side of this layer, next slide, we have what could be, there were two other alternates that we at least had to address, even though this is the main focus. Off to the right here, we have the idea of what could be a place to enter the pet remembrance. We were thinking a simple overhead structure that would be your gateway into that memorial spot. It would be colored glass, the color of rainbows, and as the sun shines down, it would leave the color of the rainbow on the pavement and you would be crossing into the Rainbow Bridge to get to the pet memorial. And then in the fourth ring, and this is the bird's eye view of the whole thing together, in the fourth ring, we could also have what could be the beginning to the dispersments, which is the other alternative to get to the areas around town where there might be artifacts. Or we've got all these oral testimonies. We could, we came up the idea, whether it's used or not, of doing the QR codes where you could get to hear audible stories and find your mapping to go in through town and see these areas of dispersments. We also have some walls over here in the snow area. We want to be able to collect that snowdrift that would happen in the wintertime because the snow is such a part of the story. We want to celebrate it and have it become part of the memorial during those months.
An effort was made to make sure that we could highlight how the actual remembrance sits in the landscape, especially as it relates to the neighborhood that's immediately to its north. In this instance, we made sure that we actually took photography and then inlaid the remembrance inside of it. So in this instance, we're just south of 122 Mesa Way, where there's a small little enclave of benches. In an effort to kind of make sure that we highlight its scale and its size, we not only imprinted it onto an actual photomontage, but then also took the effort to make sure we highlight so that you can clearly see the scale as it truly sits in a landscape. We likewise did the same thing as we made our way further down from the way, I think it's, at this point it's at south, south of 146 Mesa Court, the exact kind of opposite side of that photograph, very much taking a photo from that neighborhood. So kind of really indicating how this sits within the landscape and really begins to terrace and react to the landscape. Once again, pulling the color out of the landscape so you can really see the scale of the project. McCaslin, very much the kind of the quicker thoroughfare, but still trying to make sure that what would be that view as you look towards the right and towards the west and understanding that space, once again, removing that grayscale of the background so you can truly sense and see how the form begins to cascade down. And then obviously from the kind of overall sidewalk along McCaslin, making sure that this is actually a little bit further towards the north of our previous spot where we took the photo in the median, this one from the overall sidewalk, once again removing that color.
So again, this is just our concept. We realize there's a long way to go, a lot of people to contribute to the overall and final idea, and art is never done until it's done. So it's always going to be a work in progress. But this gives you a sense of where we're going and how we work together and getting at least a concept out there that reflects hopefully what you intended.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lupe and Julie, and to Dalton and the rest of the Remembrance Committee and to staff, of course, for taking the time and putting in so much thought and consideration. Obviously, this was just the most traumatic event for this community to go through and we've been going through it as we've been recovering over the past almost four years now. And putting something like this together in a tasteful and respectful way is critically important and you've definitely done that here. So my hat's off to you in terms of the design. I really appreciate the thought that you've put into, you know, not just the homes that were lost, but the contributions from the first responders, the loss of the pets that were impacted as well, as well as just the various stages of the fire and the progression of kind of the whole experience of it and through the recovery. I just think it was really tastefully done. So I'll open it up to my fellow council members for any thoughts, questions, comments.
I was really moved. Probably going to get choked up right now. Thank you. Like the mayor said, it's very tastefully done and obviously still a lot of emotion attached to the Marshall Fire, so thank you. Well done to Dalton and the Remembrance Committee. Great job.
Others?
I had the benefit of having been through this presentation a couple of times before already, which allowed me to kind of absorb this and think about this. And I, not a lot of words come because, you know, art touches you differently, but you guys have done what I interpret as like just a phenomenal job of truly understanding what a lot of this community went through. And we all experienced it differently. I think you've done just a great job of sort of incorporating all aspects of that into how we sort of recovered, you know, are recovering. So I really appreciate everything that's gone into this. Thank you.
I'm not sure I can say much after everyone else has, but so I'll just read my notes so I don't. I shared with Dalton right before our meeting started that the emotion that this brought up was amazing, and I say that in the best of ways. Your thoughtfulness, your awareness, your understanding and your intention, so appreciated. I wrote down emotional beyond expectations because I think I have it together and then we talk about it and I'm like, whoa. Notes for us as kind of staff and everything, we're going to need to have all your wonderful thoughts on every little signage. JG is going to be producing signage for a year because every piece of this is something to be noted. If you're going to give a tour of this, I think everything you just shared is amazing. I think everything you've included is probably way beyond I would have asked for as someone looking forward to this project. The committee has done outstanding work along with staff. So a... The committee has done outstanding work along with staff, so appreciated very much. And I just want to know where we start putting donations.
Others?
I just want to thank you for the, excuse me, what happened really is emotional, and I'm not a crier. This is just stunning and really appreciate, I mean, the thought that you put into this is outstanding, and thank you to everybody for, you know, Dalton and the committee and JG. I mean, I have like a million notes, but I mean, you touched on all of it, it's truly remarkable. Thank you.
I'll just add a couple things that jumped out at me. The images that served as the kind of palette of inspiration that you were drawing from, you know, I wouldn't have thought of using chimneys as, you know, the hearth, the centerpiece of the house, but that was really the, one of the sole surviving elements of a lot of these neighborhoods. And, you know, we lived through this, we saw it ourselves, but I wouldn't have thought to like use that as a focal point. And the way that you captured it and then the attention to detail with the sunlight and the two lives that were lost, I think is just very fitting and just really, really well done. And then when I was looking at the materials originally, my initial reaction to the posts was I was like, ah, I don't know if that necessarily is going to fit into the look and feel of the total design, because it is, you know, it's a striking location, you're looking over a big chunk of the community that was obviously impacted, but then kind of seeing the attention to the 398 structures that were lost, and also the fact that that's going to somehow involve kind of wind into the element, because that's obviously a huge part of this issue. I guess my one kind of thought in all this, which I'm sure you've contemplated in creating this, you know, when we have these wind days like we're having today and we're going to have tonight, that is like a triggering thing for our community. Anytime we, fortunately, we've got snow on the ground right now, and the ground's not as dry as it has been, but any of the time that we have kind of weather conditions that are similar to what we had then, when it was hot, dry, and windy, that is something that really triggers people. So incorporating wind is great if we can incorporate it in a way that's not going to trigger, this whole thing's going to trigger people. So I don't know if I really have a constructive suggestion here, but it was just something that jumped out at me, so do with that what you will. Any additional thoughts, comments? Thank you both for your presentation. I'll open it up for public comment, if anybody here in the public likes to give public comment on this project here. All right, seeing none, and we've got nobody on Zoom. Final thoughts from staff?
As Lupe mentioned, this is a very unusual project for us. The format is unusual, the path is unusual, and moving forward, we are looking for this small agreement just to refine the design, refine the location. Because of the area we're looking at, it is zoned open space, it does have a conservation easement on it with the county, so we'll actually have to at some point make a presentation to county commissioners to get approval for the design, and then also a design that they can use moving forward for fundraising. So appreciate your support, thank you.
Do we have an idea as to how much this is going to actually cost to deliver?
Yes, so we do have an idea, I believe the estimated costs were around $2 million for this. The town, the vision for this too, was that the town would not need to pay for this. We are interested as part of this design process and part of the reason we're interested in working with Land Design in Davis was their connection throughout the state, and we believe that with such a kind of powerful presentation like this, after the design is basically okayed, we can go out and pursue funding from individual donors, and we do believe that there's a high potential and high likelihood to be able to meet that roughly $2 million to make this possible.
Well, obviously, keep us posted on that and how to partner with you and getting the word out, because I'm sure that there's going to be a ton of people who are going to want to contribute to making this reality.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And then, final question, you know, once design's finalized and the money has been raised, what do we think in terms of the construction schedule for something like this? Is this a six-month project? Is this a year project?
At this stage, I don't know if I can really put an estimate on that. I suspect it's going to take us a little bit of time to raise that amount of money. We have not done any site surveying here, any soil testing. There could be some significant structural elements that we have to deal with, so I would think it'd be at least a year-long project, looking at some similar type of work that we've done.
So realistically, December of 2027, as a, I'm just thinking, like, you know, we've got a design and we need to raise the money, approve the, work with the county to get their approvals, you know, just want to make sure that everybody's expectation.
And we could break ground before we have all the money in hand, too.
Right.
That's kind of what, you know, we're maybe looking at, is some events that'll help us with fundraising leading up to it, and we certainly will come back to you all with updates along the way to keep you informed of where we are in the process.
Okay. All right. Anything further from council?
Yeah, I just want to say something real quick to the designers. You know, the disaster was a very, very ugly event, and what you've been able to accomplish in this scenario is to really make it accessible to a lot of people who don't understand the trauma of suffering from the fire. And I'm sure you guys are very aware of Myoln, who created Vietnam. That is such a perfect example of creating art that's visual, that's interactive, and it imbues on many, many different levels, and I think what you guys are trying to do here is not just evoke emotions, but install memory. And, you know, I didn't, I wasn't sure how I felt about this at first, I'll be honest with you, but the more I really look at this and the way you guys walk through it, I would almost be more in favor if these poles did not make any noise. I would almost be in favor if there was silence on that, because there's something about letting the wind do its thing, and these poles don't try to harness a sound from it, almost the defiant nature of it's like, we're not affected by you. You've carried the fire here, you've wrecked so much damage, but we're standing here and our community rebuilt, so I think maybe silence would be a lot more touching than any amount of noise can be made, but that's just my two cents. So, but again, thank you, I think you've done a wonderful job.
Agreed. All right. Anything further? All right, I'll make a motion to approve Town Superior Resolution Number R-101, Series 2025, Resolution of Town Council, Town Superior, approving professional services agreement with Davis Partnership Architects for an initial concept design for the Marshall Fire Remembrance Gathering Area Project.
So moved.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember, sorry, it's the second from Mayor Protam Serbu. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Serbu?
Yes.
Mayor Lasis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing the next iteration of the design and moving forward. We are now on to item seven, which is consideration of a resolution of the Town Council, Town Superior approving a landscape maintenance agreement renewal. Let's push on through.
See if I can get my AV working here. There we go. All right, deep breath after that one. So this item is a renewal of our annual agreement with Vargas Property Services for landscape services. Vargas has been a vendor with the town for several years now. They've been doing a very good job, very detailed job. I think you heard some comments earlier about the appreciation that we have for their work, and it does come with a lot of detail, just to outline a few things in this year's agreement with Vargas. We are making some adjustments between Class One and Class Two, so you'll see some changes in the dollar amounts between those two classes as they're billed throughout the year. We've also taken on parcel K in downtown, which is the Plaza area, and that's been added into the contract. Some other highlights is related to Regulation 29 and their efforts with electrification. They provided a full report on that. I think we did a presentation on that when that first came out, kind of how that is focusing on the critical times during the summer when those fossil fuel exhausts cause the greatest amount of damage. And so they've provided some reports on their efforts to really focus on total electricity with all those smaller handheld pieces of equipment during that time, and they were also able to extend on those months for the use of those electrified equipment pieces. There is definitely an increase in the dollar amount this year, and most of that is due to just inflator cost, cost of living increase, and then also the changes in the new properties coming online in downtown that we've picked up. There's a lot of detail in their report, and I know that we have representatives here from Vargas to answer any questions, if there are any.
Why don't we have Vargas representatives come on down and...
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good to see you. Mayor Lasis, all the council members, thank you so much for having us here for our annual renewal meeting. So I have to say, I was really moved by that previous presentation as well, so my heart's still kind of calming down from that, but we are just always so grateful to partner with the community, every opportunity we find, whether it's on an individual level or, you know, through the town, we try to connect with everybody that we come across, you know, just waving and saying hello. But we also invest a lot in our education of our staff and our safety protocols, so, you know, we're always looking to further our education, be, you know, right at the spear tip of innovation and technology. We attend all kinds of different programs and education opportunities that are put out there by CSU in Fort Collins, Colorado Department of Agriculture, which is in Broomfield, and there are amazing partners throughout the industry that we also look to, to make sure that we're offering you the best possible service that we can in this industry. So we're thankful for all of those opportunities, we're always looking for creativity, and of course, we're interested to hear any of your questions.
All right, well, thank you. Questions from council?
Just a quick macro question. So the original agreement was a four-year agreement, so is it next year that we bid this thing out at the collective?
I think we're looking at a longer period of time moving forward for critical services, and I think that this contract falls into that category, but, I mean, we certainly open to ideas or suggestions.
Okay, I only know it was at the end of 2021, we rebid the landscape contract, so it's been, this would be the fourth year of that, so I just wasn't totally sure on what our plans are regarding the overall.
That's just an informal policy that we have, we don't have any sort of like statutory requirement to bid every four years or?
No, it's been an operating policy of previous councils with, working with the manager. There's a few agreements that don't necessarily make sense to rebid out, thinking through the wastewater treatment plant and also the Bullock County Sheriff's IGA, there's some agreements, for the most part, all agreements are that can be.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that question is, you know, when you entered into the agreement in 2021, there's a whole focus on electrification, you know, 25% per year, we hit a basically, I mean, an asymptotic level for where the market is. Then the state stepped in and said, you got to do this anyways, and I kind of want to reassess what our plans are for electrification, absent or above what the state requirements are. The state requires during the highs ozone months, you know, 100% of the handhelds, which we're doing, but we were doing that anyways, so it's a statutory thing, now we're stopping at the stop sign because that's a requirement. So the question then becomes, what are we actually doing over and above the statutory requirements, and what do we want our landscape contractor to do? So the question is whether or not we do this as part of this agreement, you know, future agreement or anything else like that, I just want to make sure relative to our sustainability plan, that we're actually, you know, adhering to what it is that we wanted to do, what we're trying to do, and actually what's required of us by the state.
Yeah, that's, it's a good question, and you're absolutely right. When we initiated the contract in 2021, we were very confidently moving forward with our electrification plan and looking at the percentage of their fleet that was going to be electrified, and we worked very closely with Vargas on that, and they were on board to meet those needs. I think what we learned over time is that having the percentage for your fleet being electrified doesn't necessarily mean that those are, that's equipment that is able to be used. So, you know, the industry, the technology in the industry didn't advance as quickly as maybe we all hoped, and there were some difficulties in that equipment being functional and even staying operational, and I think we had to take a step back and look at, well, what can we do and what can we focus on? And I think that the Regulation 29 that the state put into place is a very attainable, you know, goal, and the fact that Vargas meant that and then actually added additional months onto that, I'm, you know, I think we're fortunate to have a partnership that did that pretty much on their own, and that they are using electric mowers when they can. So they have the fleet to do more electric mowing, but the technology with that fleet, it's not always usable and not always functional, and I'll definitely let Elena jump in here because she has a lot more expertise in that area than I do.
Yeah, definitely. So a big part of what we've done is we have worked with different manufacturers, because they're all developing this technology at the same time. And so we found that, you know, certain manufacturers make a better blower, and a different one makes a better edger. And part of the issue is if you have five different brands with technology, they all each have unique batteries, and so you're then diversifying, you know, how many different kinds of batteries you have going out into the field. So we really want to, we've tested the different brands and we've found who our top performers are, and that's been really, we've been like guinea pigs, and we are, the state is actually, the reporting process of Regulation 29 hasn't even been developed yet, so they are actually asking for our reports and our input on creating the legislation for this, and we're also sending all of our reports to the manufacturers as well. So we really are like at the spearhead of this effort. So we went ahead and we converted all the handhelds initially, and that was back in 2021, and we had a lot of failures with those. And then, so we've been able to really dial in those. And I'm not going to say the names, but you know, there's a certain orange brand that's pretty good, you know? And there was a certain green brand that, you know, was promised to, had, at the time, they had the best battery technology. But then the other manufacturers had better equipment. And so when the battery-powered energy caught up on that side, those manufacturers were able to provide a better product. So we bought two mowers from, you know, from the green brand in the initial process. Well, within the first three years, both of those were dead completely. And so within those first years, we were a first generation on that machine. So the next machine, we get a trade-in. So I had to trade in my two dead mowers for a new fifth gen. So, you know, the technology has already developed in the time of the contract from a first-generation machine to a fifth-generation machine. And so the fact that we invested early on the front end kind of means that we ended up with a lot of the duds to begin with. So we, again, submitting our data, are collecting that information, helping manufacturers, you know, make better solutions so that we can work together on this for the future. So I do have that shiny new mower, fifth gen, that is going to be, you know, fully, it's fully dedicated to the town of Superior. But what we've done on top of that is after having the trial of the different brands over the last few years in the handhelds, having dialed that into really good quality stuff, we have been testing mowers from some of these other manufacturers now, who now they're trying to get more into the mower game. We definitely don't see them in the bigger sizes, you know, a 62-inch deck, a 72-inch deck. When you're talking about bigger machines, the bigger you get, the harder it's going to be to push. But we're looking at some smaller machines, some kind of 48-inch decks, you know, that we can do kind of little in-between areas. So we have demoed those during those peak season months during the town of Superior. So not only did we meet Regulation 29 with the handhelds in those peak ozone months, we extended our handhelds outside of the peak ozone months. And then we did dedicate mowers, and we're working through that trial and error period now with those mowers as that technology advances more. But we do have dedicated mowing that is electrified, that is not part of the mandate. So that's, you know, my best way to sum up how we're going above the mandate.
No, and I appreciate that. And I think, you know, obviously, when the board adopted this, the original agreement, the mandate didn't exist. And it's like, it was just a focus of us to electrify, which is still, I think, you know, one of the core desires for the community per the sustainability plan. You know, Regulation 29 is what it is, but we still wanted to get to, you know, point zero where there's no gas fumes being used. But, you know, you bring up some really great topics of conversation for future date of, you know, because you have probably better data than anybody as it relates to, you know, where are we struggling with the gas versus electric on the mowers with our topology and the terrain? And maybe we should just turn that into gravel and rocks. Get, start getting rid of some of the Kentucky bluegrass that is difficult to mow with an electric mower, and maybe we don't need it. Because that's the next level of this conversation in terms of, you know, how do we reduce our emissions? But to a point of where it makes the most sense, because that's costing us the most in terms of electric versus gas, which is like another piece of it that we've never even, we've never even talked about. It was just sort of like, let's get there. But in order to get there, there's massive trade-offs. Because if it's a narrower mower, you're spending a whole bunch more on labor, and then that's sort of counterproductive to what you were trying to do to begin with. But those are, I love where this is going. We're not going to solve it tonight, but I would love this to be part of the next, you know, sort of decision point in terms of what it is that we want Vargas to help us go do, you know, with these new fifth-generation motors or the orange mower, if we want to incorporate that. How do we do that and make it smarter across all our appliances and how we're attacking the problem? And rather than just continue to grow the denominator, let's shrink the denominator so that there's less to have to deal with.
Thank you. We would absolutely appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with Park staff and, and, you know, the board to any extent. You know, we have recommendations. We have done some turf reduction projects in town. There are grant opportunities for that kind of work to be done. So we would love to be part of partnering with, you know, making sure that these landscape changes in the future have continuity in design as well as, you know, considering being fire-wise, being water-wise, and being pollinator-friendly.
Thanks.
Yeah.
First of us, I want to thank Vargas for all the phenomenal work that you do. I don't know that there are very many issues in Superior where there's more consensus around Vargas doing a great job than Vargas doing a great job. So I just want to say kudos to you and your team. We hear from Leslie and her Park staff all the time about just going above and beyond to help out with little things that, you know, you weren't asked to do, but your crews see that, oh, we need to lend a hand, and you guys lend a hand. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. I had a question, and this might be more for Leslie around the costs associated with not in contract. And, you know, I appreciate that there was an email chain over the last week or so around some of those costs. And I'm curious how often those not-in-contract costs are occurring? And how do we expand the scope of work in Exhibit A to include some of those things so they are in contract? So it still provides staff the flexibility to, you know, get a service that it wasn't planned for, and it's an emergency, and it still allows us to know what those costs are going to be through the contract and not just, you know, a number that was potentially made up?
Certainly. And there are a lot of out-of-contract situations similar to the Chamber. Vargas serves as kind of our labor force sometimes when we need something done and we need it today or tomorrow. Or we need an idea of how to fix something or something needs to be cleaned up. They're quick to respond, and we have attempted to put all the time and material costs in Exhibit A. There's always going to be something that isn't included there, whether it's, you know, a new type of plant material that maybe we didn't think of or wasn't available, a new type of soil mix that we've determined is needed in this particular area. And I think there's always going to be some things that are not listed, but we can continue to add to Exhibit A. It doesn't affect the bottom line of the agreement at all. We're not going to change anything that's in there, but we can add to it and try to refine if there are new services, new material, new equipment that we need to document. We can add to that throughout the year and keep a running, a running list of that. Because, I mean, you probably know better than I do or Matt that what's going to happen tomorrow, we don't know. Do you need to rent a piece of equipment? Do you need to find a different kind of tree to go in this location, or what is the situation?
And again, my point is I still want to make sure that the town staff has the flexibility to be responsive and pick up the phone and say, we have, you know, an urgent thing. Can you come out and take care of this? But in reviewing some of those emails that went around, there's like supervisor hours that are not in the contract but were billed, and labor hours that were not in the contract and billed. And so again, is there just a way of expanding the number of job classifications that are in the contract to capture those so it doesn't look like it's not part of the contract and we're trying to be sneaky or something? It just provides more transparency in my mind.
We can certainly do that. And some of those situations, we can address through just greater detail in the actual invoicing and documentation so that there's a written document of, you know, the solution that was arrived at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Stephanie? Just want to echo everything Renee said as far as thanking you for your partnership. And I know, I mean, it's a heavy lift on events, and you always help staff in the Chamber to make sure those are accomplished. But beyond that, just your community partnership has always been so strong and it's so appreciated. I mean, from educational events about how to do fire-wise landscaping and not only being the guinea pig on sustainability, because I know that you have been and appreciate, I'm sure that's frustrating, and so thank you for everything you're doing there. But, you know, running pollinator education and helping residents understand that piece of the puzzle. And from driving around and your guys were, you know, doing landscaping and seeing that there were some firelots being cleared of weeds and how our volunteers were going to move those weeds to, you know, a disposal site. And they just stopped and helped load it and, you know, with no fanfare or anything, just, you know, let me help. And so I feel like the culture that you've created really is just so amazing. And the fact that you and your team really do feel like part of the community. I mean, we hear a lot about all the things that are not working in town. And I don't remember getting emails from our residents about any sort of issues with Vargas. And I think that speaks volumes to the care and thought that goes into how you guys run your business. So I really, really appreciate it and just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I will echo Councilmember Miller's sentiments there. The only time that I've ever heard anything negative about Vargas is when we stopped working with Vargas for a year. Then I heard a lot. And that's just a testament to the job that you do and just how valuable a community partner you are to the Town of Superior and to the Chamber. So I'm 100% in support of this contract for tonight. You know, this is a really big contract for the town. It's one of the bigger contracts that we sign. As a point of reference, in 2024, the contract was about 1.55 million, and then 116,000 for flower. In '25, it was 1.66 million plus 128,000 for flower, and this year it's 1.76 million, and then $132,000 for flower. But, you know, in terms of what this community gets for that money, I mean, it's money that if we weren't spending it with Vargas, we were spending it with somebody else or having to hire a lot of staff to try to do the work. And I don't think that we would actually be able to deliver that work for the price that we're actually paying with this contract. So kudos to Vargas for continuing to do an excellent job for our community. And just, you know, thank you so much for being a true member of the community because, you know, you're not just a, you know, vendor that we sign a contract with, that you perform services with. You're actually like in the community. I think our, the people in Superior probably see, we've got a wonderful town staff, and I'm not saying anything bad about town staff, but they see the Vargas, especially during the summer months, the Vargas employees more often than they're seeing town staff doing everything out in the community. And notwithstanding that, like, all the Vargas employees are just really pleasant and professional and just nice to all the community members and turn the leaf blowers off and the lawn mowers off when people are walking their dogs. And, you know, that makes a difference. You know, they don't need to do that, but that makes a difference, and people notice it. And periodically, we hear from residents that just say they really appreciate who Vargas is and how they act. So thank you for being such a quality community partner. And with that, I'll...
I have one more, one more comment to make. I really appreciate, I see your crews almost every single morning here at the gas station filling up. And I cannot imagine the amount of money that they spend on bottled water every single day because they're coming out with cases. Just from a sustainability standpoint, could we get them five-gallon igloo for water instead of buying a bunch of single-serve bottled water every single day? I get that we're, there's some sales tax benefit to the town, but it's a lot of plastic bottles that are probably making their way into the landfill. That's my only sort of observation there.
Yes, definitely. That is something that we are always looking at sustainable practices and, you know, what we can be doing from our operations standpoint, you know, not only in our practices, but our, you know, for our services in the industry, but just our day-to-day practices. And we talk about things like, you know, making sure trash is picked up in your truck too and not just, you know, in the properties, that you're doing letter control and things like that. A lot of considerations have been made. So, you know, there's keeping water cold, there's hauling it, there's a lot of different factors in there. But yes, we do make those kind of considerations, and we'll continue to discuss it amongst our staff.
Mike, you're thinking of 10-gallon. Go with the 10-gallon igloo coolers that are truck-mounted in construction. They use these all the time. It keeps them cold the entire day long, and you can just go back and forth to the truck. You don't have to worry about the five-gallon recycling, so.
You can also get a product called Squincher, which is similar to Gatorade that you can add in there. It's a little electrolyte that kind of helps with the, you know, the hot sun and that kind of stuff, too. We also have popsicles that we give that are electrolyte popsicles in the heat of summer to help from overheating. We have had, you know, someone overheat in the past. So, yeah, there's a lot of safety considerations and environmental considerations when you're operating, you know, on a scale that we do. But it is very important to us, and we do have discussions about that. Right now, we're in our off-season, you know, and we're doing a lot of planning and education. And, you know, things like that are just the kind of discussions we're having. Yeah.
All right. Anything further from council? Open it up to public for public comment. Renee's already said her piece. And we've got nobody on Zoom, so I'll make a motion to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number R-102, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of Town of Superior approving Landscape Services Agreement with Vargas Property Services, Inc. to provide landscape services.
Second?
And a motion from Mayor Lasis and a second from Councilmember Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Lasis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Serbo?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, especially from all my staff.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
See you on Saturday, right?
See you on Saturday.
All right, and we can muscle through? All right, we're on to our final item of the evening, which is consideration of a resolution of the Town Council of Town of Superior amending the 2026 fee schedule. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor Jeff Stonetownstaff. This is just a continuation from the governmental fee schedule that we did with the budget on October 13th. We were going to bring trash. This is what we talked about then. That's going to come back to you guys in February. That'll go into effect in April. So that's why you do not see those here. So Leslie's here. I'm going to kind of turn it over to her because the big things are the new fee schedule for some of those new areas. And then as well as talking about the dumpster permit that we had put in effect after the Marshall Fire. That's kind of why that one's coming out, because we just don't need it, and it's just too much time for staff to keep track of $500 deposits, and then a new contractor license fee for planning. So those are kind of the changes we're looking to do from what you saw in October. So if you have any questions for me, otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie if she's got anything else to add.
All right.
You're going to be tired of listening to me today.
Never.
Just a few highlights, updates to fees and charges, mostly from the Pro's Department with the new community center civic space. We looked at room fees, very similar to what we had at the community center. We've been using those fees for several months now, and reservations are starting to pick up. So I think that's working out fine. We did want to reiterate the kind of council policy of residents getting two free reservations a month and that that would be between the two facilities. So you don't get four, you still just get two. But that would also be excluding the second-floor event space, which we really want to try and focus that space for public events as much as possible. The other piece of that is looking at nonprofits, government entities, partner organizations such as our youth sports groups, that they would be paying just out-of-pocket fees for any of those events that they have. And out-of-pocket fees would mostly be if they were, if we had to stay open extra hours, we needed extra janitorial service. If they needed, we do have a stage in the civic space now, and moving that about does take a little bit of labor, so some dollars for those kind of things. So that was one of the big requests. For outdoor park and pavilion reservations, we did put in there a... For outdoor park and pavilion reservations, we did put in there a qualification that if, if folks are looking to reserve multiple facilities or multiple parks for multiple days, those requests will come to you.
So I had a question about that, just because the, the way that the fee schedule reads right now in the fees and charges guiding principles section under Item 5 and then Item 6, it says, facility reservations over 100 people must be coordinated with town staff and may require an event permit. And then the next part says, request for multiple facilities or for multi-day reservations may require approval. I just, I don't like conditional language, so if it's, if it's going to require it, let's just say it requires. And, or the question I have is, how many of those types of permits and facility reservations are you seeing? Like, is this something that, are we expecting to get one a year? Are we expecting to get 10 a year?
Like, I mean, we, for the multi-day, multi-facility, something like the disc golf, probably not very many, if any. For the larger event size, we get a lot of those, whether it's, you know, it might be a sport group, a U Sports Group, it might be the Rock Creek HOA, it might be the PTO, but they're bringing in 100, 150 people. And so what they're doing is they're, they're impacting that area more than what either that pavilion is set up for, or what the parking's set up for, or what the restrooms are set up for. And there's also, obviously, if there's any alcohol involved, if they're bringing in additional, like a bounce house or something like that, if they're setting up pop-up tents. So those kind of things, we want to go through our special event team so they can take a look at those things and make sure that they're, they're safe, that it's not going to over-impact the neighborhood, or the streets, or the facilities that are there. So we can, we can definitely say if it's over 100, that they'll go through the special event team. But there's probably, I mean, during the summer, several, several a month.
Yeah. I mean, I guess the, the section for the multi-day reservations, so dealing with like the disc golf situation, I think we should just tweak it to just say that that's going to require approval from Town Council, not may require. With regards to like the reservations for, you know, a group of over 100, I'm not as concerned about that necessarily coming to Town Council or anything like that for approval. And I know that we've had instances in the past with like, you know, a hockey group that wants to rent out Purple Park for a party, and, you know, people submit their liquor license application, and all of a sudden, it's just like, the party is happening on, you know, this coming weekend, and like, we're, we're voting to approve, you know, the Monday before the event, which just isn't great, right? In terms of, we only meet twice a month, and then during the summer, sometimes it's once a month. So I want to be flexible, and I'm not, I guess, as concerned with, you know, the, I don't think the community's necessarily getting up in arms about, you know, 100-person gathering. Now, if it's a thousand-person gathering or 500, like, maybe that's different, but, so I'll defer to you on that. But I think that on the multi-day reservations, let's just make that change to say requires instead of may.
Yep.
Leslie, question I had, it's under the sports complex fields. The lights, I'm assuming that's the lights at a community park. What does it actually cost us per hour to operate those lights? We're charging $20 per hour, and I got to imagine it costs us more to turn those lights on than 20 bucks an hour, but I am probably wrong.
It's a little bit of an estimate. So community park is, are still halogen lights, so they run a little bit higher. That'll be a future project someday. Our lights down here in Superior Commons are much more efficient, so we kind of round that out a little bit, but we do the best to get to a fair number. We also compare that with our neighboring communities and what they're charging.
Hey, Lasis, I had a question with regards to pool rental, because I didn't know that was a thing. So is that renting out like a room, like at the building for like a party, or is that you can rent out the entire pool area?
You can rent it out for a pool party. We typically do those after hours.
Okay. And so where it has daytime, I'm assuming people can't bogart the pool for like a Saturday afternoon when the entire community wants to be able to use the pool, and you've rented it for like $30?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We really target the non-public hours as much as we can, so.
Okay.
There occasionally might be a bleed over, but for the most part, that's worked out pretty well.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't precluding the community from using it for somebody who like rented it for $30.
That would not be popular.
Okay, yeah. I want to make sure that's not something that can happen.
I'm going to book all the bowls for Saturdays in June. Just a quick question, because I think I heard what I thought I heard. The event space at the Civic Center can't be booked for free. You have to pay the amount, because there's still an asterisk next to it, which then refers to this space is eligible to be two free rentals per month for residents.
And I think we've looked at our, for the not-for-profit groups, we are looking at some situations where we have private groups who want to do a public event, so it's not a private event. We are partnering with them, and in that case, you know, they pay the out-of-pocket costs, so.
No, I think I got that. I think with the asterisk there, it makes it the same as like--
Is that confusing?
Yeah, because it makes it the same as like the conference room, where, you know, me as a resident can go book the second-floor civic space for free twice per month, and then my wife can do it twice per month, and my daughter could do it twice per month, and so on and so forth. Because I think if you just take that asterisk off--
We'll clean that up, definitely. Thank you for pointing that out. The idea is to allow a group who wants to help us with a public event that benefits a community that we could allow for that.
Yeah, no, I know we went through this conversation a year ago, and thought we'd see how it goes, and I thought I'd see that asterisk deleted, but it's not yet. I think if you do that--
It says fees for use of the meeting rooms.
No, because there's a line item for--
But then it says excludes the event space at the civic space.
Right, but the above event space, second floor full, has 150-hour, with an asterisk next to it, which then refers to what is allowed. So, I mean, they're both mutually confusing.
Yeah, okay.
We tried our best.
No, it's fine. I just want to make it abundantly clear that you cannot rent the civic space for free.
That's correct.
That's all I want.
Not the second-floor event space, correct.
Yeah, the second floor of the civic space cannot be rented for free.
You can rent a meeting room in the civic space--
For free. For free, yes.
Right?
Correct.
Because otherwise, I'm going to bogart the entire thing for the month.
All right. Okay, any additional questions for staff? Anybody in the public like to make public comment on our fee schedule for 2026? Come on. Come on, Renee. All right. Anybody on Zoom? Nobody's on Zoom. I will entertain a motion to approve, what is this?
I'll make a motion to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number R-103, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving landscape-- oh, how did I? That's the wrong one.
The agenda got screwed up. Shannon's printing up.
Okay.
She's printing a paper copy.
I did click on the right agenda item.
Yeah. It's a Granicus issue.
Okay. I would just make a motion to approve a resolution adopting the revised 2026 governmental fee schedule, subject to the modification that removes the conditional "may" language in--
The asterisks.
And the asterisks. Yes.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion from Councilmember Foster.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Miller. Roll call.
Will be the second.
Mayor Lasis?
Yes.
You can't log it.
That's Shannon's paper.
I think it's like a roles and responsibility violation.
Well, we have a second. I just want to say thank you for, as we're focusing on making sure staff is using their time in the most advantageous possible way, to be looking at the fee schedule and things like the dumpster, realizing that's probably superfluous and doesn't need to be in there anymore. So thank you for taking a hard look at our practices.
Agreed.
Actually, Mike was going to read it.
Yeah, Mike's going to read it.
All right, second attempt. Make a motion to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number R-103, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior adopting a fee schedule for 2026.
All right, we've got a motion from Councilmember Foster.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lasis.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Serbu.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, and unless there's anything further, we're adjourned at 8:34. Happy holidays, everybody. See you at Winterfest on Saturday.